Hello, everyone. Are we ready to get started?
Yes.
Welcome. My name is Vida Flores and I'm with the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm joined this evening with our timekeeper, Joan Brown. She has two cards for you, a one-minute card and a 30-second card. So can everyone see her? See her? Great. So welcome to the Fairfax Town Council Candidates Forum. There are two open seats for the town council. Three open seats. Wow. Thank you very much. And I really want to thank our candidates this evening for stepping up and joining the community to be leaders. I think it's really important that we dare to step out of our comfort zone and speak to our community. This evening, we have six candidates: Bruce Ackerman, Debra Benson, Barbara Kohler, and Charles Cornwell, John Reed, and Cindy Swift. So the candidates will have two minutes to make an opening statement, and we'll start with Bruce Ackerman.
Well, good evening, and thank you. So I have been involved in Fairfax for quite a while. Lived here for a good while with my family. My wife is a midwife in town, and she also works out at Point Reyes Clinic. My daughter is out in Bellinas as a farmer, and you've probably eaten her produce at Good Earth. So we're -- we are embedded in the community. I've been involved with the town for a couple of decades now. On G-PAC first, on the General Plan Advisory Committee, which I ultimately chaired. During the 10 years that I was on G-PAC, we did complete the general plan. And then moved on to the General Plan Implementation Committee, which I chaired for a while as well. And then we formed on that the Climate Action Plan for town, which I think is pretty innovative. And we formed the Climate Action Committee, which I currently chair. And I've been a planning commissioner for two and a half years. I've also started a successful worker-owned business managing large projects. I want to see a town that's working together to solve problems. I think the divisiveness that has sometimes marred our town doesn't lead to good decision-making. And we live in challenging times. We need to do the best we possibly can. So I've got a number of endorsements, which you can look at in my material, but they include John Reed and Renee Goddard, Peter Lox, and David Weinsoff of the council, and a number of planning commissioners, former council members, and many active members of the community. So, thank you. Good to be here.
Red?
Hello. My name is Debra Benson. Thank you for inviting me. I'm a 25-year resident of Fairfax. I've been fortunate enough, as a single mom, to raise my daughter here. She's living in San Francisco now. I'm an accountant. I have attended college classes, but for language and art. College is not the only track to success. I learned my business skills from the best in the field and have worked with the best in the Bay Area in my accounting business for the past 28 years in Marin. People trust me with their money. I've spent hours of my own time over the last years tracking expenditures from the town, so in a sense, I have been taking care of your money as well. Am I too close? This year, our town is running a deficit budget. I don't have the credentials or the experience of serving on the council or the planning commission. I'm not competing with that experience. I can't. What I do have is years of experience of being a Fairfax activist, following the issues, observing, and questioning the direction that our town is being taken. I feel that my voice and the voices of other residents are not being heard, which is the reason I'm up here. If elected, I will listen to the people of the town, pay attention to their voices. I think it's time for a change. I'll work very hard to preserve what we have here. Fairfax is not just any small town in America with an ordinary small-town character. It's Fairfax. I have the endorsement of the Sierra Club because of my slow growth and strong environmental positions, and of longtime Fairfax residents like former supervisor Pete Aragoni and his wife, Pat. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm honored to have served on the Fairfax Town Council these last four years and as mayor in 2015. I was appointed May 2013 and then elected in November of that year as a top vote getter. I'm a 21-year Fairfax resident with 28 years in Marin overall. I'm a scientist with bachelor's and master's degrees in biological sciences. I have a long-term commitment to protection of public health and the environment, with more than 20 years running statewide hazardous waste site cleanup and permitting for Cal EPA, and five years enforcing air quality regulations for the nine counties of the Bay Area Air District. I'm currently an administrator of a significant climate change program for CAPCOA, the nonprofit which serves the 35 air districts in California. I have an excellent track record of accomplishments on the council. My primary issues of focus, if re-elected, include living within our budget, maintaining and improving our aging infrastructure, protecting our ridgelines, our open space, small-town qualities, and providing adequate and affordable housing, and supporting our fight against global warming and promoting our environmental sustainability. I also serve on several boards and committees, notably Marin Clean Energy, Community Media Center of Marin, Marin County Assessment of Fair Housing, and several town and Fairfax committees. I also serve on the Bay Area Air District Hearing Board as an alternate. I have many endorsements, most notably Supervisor Katie Rice, all of the Fairfax Town Council, Larry Bragman, the Marin Democrats and Marin Young Democrats, both the Marin Professional and Ross Valley Firefighters Associations, the Fairfax Police Officers Association, Sierra Club, Marin Association of Realtors, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, and many other community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask everyone to hold their applause until the very end, and I'll ask our questions order to bring the first batch up, please.
Hi. My name is Charles Cornwell, and why am I running? Well, I think I can trace it back to my childhood, actually. My father was a Republican and my mother was a Democrat. And we used to drive to Lake Tahoe, and my father would put Rush Limbaugh on the radio. And my mom would have to sit back there in the backseat and listen to Rush Limbaugh for hours. And eventually, we'd go through a town called Rio Linda, and Rush Limbaugh had this thing that people in Rio Linda are idiots. And I learned from watching my parents, the way they interacted and listening to Rush Limbaugh, that I don't like partisan politics. I don't like when groups of people tell other groups of people that they're wrong just because they're part of a group. And that eventually led to me not being part of any political party. For a long time, I was undeclared. Recently, I joined the Green Party because I believe that environmental issues can be looked at as problems of science and engineering and not as partisan problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi, I'm John Reed. I'm currently Fairfax's mayor. I've been on two terms, and second time around as mayor. And I've lived in Fairfax since 1991. Let me see my background. I used to do a lot of work in special effects and making puppet movies like Nightmare Before Christmas, James and the Giant Peach, that kind of thing, which is basically a collaborative process, people working together towards a common goal. Since then, technology's kind of changed that business. I've spent a lot more of my time doing community service. I helped start Safe Roots to School at Manor School in Fairfax. That's where Safe Roots started nationwide. I worked 10 years on the general plan, talking with people in Fairfax, figuring out how we can preserve this town in the good way that we all love. I spent seven years on the volunteer board. Five and a half of those years were as chair of the volunteer board. And that was before getting elected to the council here. One of the projects I worked on that actually led me into getting involved in Fairfax is I used to live on Tamil Pius next to one of the trails that was there all over town. And I was talking to one of the firemen who had done recon over in the Oakland Hills fire. And he told me the number of people, which was staggering, and the hundred numbers that he expected to die in Fairfax because people only had one way to get out, and that's driving out. And that was the major way that people died in the Oakland Hills fire. So that galvanized me to work to do that. I mean, obviously, fires are complex, and that's not the only way to get out, kind of thing. But with enough planning, knowing where those trails are, it gives you options. You know, sheltering places is often the best way to deal with it, but really, that's a different discussion. Basically, I listened to people on all sides of the thing, and I can see it from all their sides, and that's why I'm good. So, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Swift. I was raised in San Francisco, and I moved to Fairfax 37 years ago. One of the good things about moving to a small town like Fairfax is that it was easy and remains so today to get involved in the community, which is what I did when I moved here. I found myself the second year being the chair of the Fairfax Festival Committee, chair of the Fairfax Festival Parade. I'm currently on the planning commission, appointed last October. I serve on the Fairfax Citizens Disaster Committee, as well as I'm the Fairfax Community Emergency Response Team Coordinator for CERT. I also serve on the local library and county library friends board. I'm past president of both of those. I was the co-chair of the successful 2014 countywide library funding measure. I'm also a past member of the Park and Rec Commission and the volunteer board. Professionally, I'm retired from the Army Corps of Engineers, where I was an IT program and project manager, leading a team of IT project managers managing corps-wide projects. I'm running to maintain our small-town scale and character. My priorities are public safety and disaster preparedness, fixing and maintaining our infrastructure, like our streets and roadways, improving our pedestrian safety and parking in the downtown area without jeopardizing our traditional downtown, and managing our budget in a transparent and efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, our candidates will have a minute and a half to answer questions, and the first question will begin with Bruce. Who should create a disaster plan for Fairfax neighborhoods, and what new ideas do you have here for Fairfax?
May I begin? So I, in the course of the campaign, I was privileged to spend some time with the firefighters and the IAFF, who endorsed my candidacy. It was a really revealing discussion. I also worked on the general plan safety element. And so I've thought about this, and as John alluded to, there's some questions that we need to make sure we're clear on and get out to people as to exactly what to do in the event of a disaster. I would say that the fire department definitely takes the lead in terms of deciding what the plan should be. And we should take our cues from the people who know about these things because we have no idea what we're getting into, and the people who have been in it do. I would suggest that we focus on very simple messages, like what the notification system is, and if you have a cellphone, which many of us do. Many, many people don't even have landlines anymore. You need to register the cellphone with the notification system, so making sure that everybody is on that, maybe even testing it sometimes so that we can all make sure we're on it and see how it works, and having some understanding of what that would be used for. So I would say that's probably the first step, because it's very hard to get information to a large number of people in this busy world. Thanks.
I have been a part of a neighborhood group who formed when a report from one of our neighbors in the Cascades was presented, after a report was presented to the town council and the staff, that said that we, living in a wildland urban interface zone with all the dead wood, we are in grave danger that if a wildfire broke out, we would have very little chance of putting it out. So we gathered together a few of the fire chiefs. We were given recently an educational get-together by Fire Safe Marin, and we still don't have an evacuation plan. So I think that the town staff, the town council, need to get together with Fire Safe Marin and give us a plan. Tell us how we're going to get out, put out educational outreach to the people, and maybe have more of these get-togethers with the fire chiefs and Fire Safe Marin.
So when I was mayor in 2015, I reconvened the Citizens Disaster Council, which had not been convened since 2006. What we did was we had community members, members of Red Cross, fire chiefs, police, and others to develop the formal update to our emergency operation plan and our maps. And that was adopted by the council in late 2015. What we planned to do is then take that out to do a community kind of disaster plan. What do you do? Because that plan was for our emergency responders. Unfortunately, that kind of did not work out. And so this year, I asked that we put money in the budget specifically to develop a community disaster plan that would be married with some of these projects, such as what's happening in the Cascades. Fire Safe Marin, unfortunately, that goes to a different group, so we just learned about it, and now we're involved, or our fire chiefs and police are involved. But what we need to do is really work with the community, because the emergency responders can only do so much. You need to know what to do. One of the things I did when I was mayor is I asked Cindy Swift to become our CERT coordinator for all of Fairfax. And what she did is take all the old records and put those together, so we now know who the CERTs are in Fairfax. So that's a start. We've got some ways to go, and we don't have a lot of time to do that. But I appreciate what's happening in the Cascades Fire Safe Group.
Charles?
Well, as far as an official plan, I would have to say that we have to defer to the fire department. As far as common sense and what we rely on when we're in the face of an emergency, I think we all need to work on that. I know there's, there are walks going on which are meant to maintain and reclaim paths throughout the hills, which allow people to walk from their hillside home down to safer areas without using the main roads, which may be blocked by roads or fire. And I think that we need a strong outreach in this regard so that at least everyone knows their path down to safer areas. Some of these paths have been blocked by people who don't like, frankly, don't like people walking next to their yards. But these paths have been mapped. I think John's worked on that, and they need to be used, they need to be known, and especially by people who don't walk and hike often, they need to know their paths. I grew up on Oak Road up in the hills the first few years of my life, and I can only imagine a family up there with young children who haven't been walking around, maybe they're taking care of their baby. They still need to know how to get downtown in an emergency without a car. Thanks.
John?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I should say there's many types of disasters. It's fire season right now, so it's really appropriately in people, front of people's minds. And traditionally, or by law or whatever, it has been the responsibility of a specific police officer to put together a disaster plan for Fairfax. And we had an officer assigned to that, and he was doing a pretty good job pulling it together. Unfortunately, he had a motorcycle accident, and kind of that stopped that in that part of it there, and that wasn't reassigned to another one, and, you know, I have problems with that. I think that the fire department absolutely needs to also be involved in that process. I mentioned earlier the trails and things. I think the trails are primarily for people to get around on foot, and it gives you one more option to get out in case of a wildfire, which sometimes can be appropriate. And I think it's crucially important to have those there, but I think they're better at building community, frankly, than, you know, saving somebody's life, though in the Oakland fire, most people were saved because of the trails there. You can't ignore that fact. I think I put together something similar out in the Cascade about up on Manor Hill here, where we did the same thing. We had, you know, a house with a big yard there. We had fire coming already. Okay. Sorry.
I think it's a two-pronged effort. We know that in an emergency, it might be three to seven days before first responders can get to us as individuals or neighborhoods. So as individuals, we need to be better prepared, and the same with neighborhoods. One of the great things that's happening, as Debra mentioned in the Cascades, is the neighborhood-initiated effort to become a fire-wise neighborhood, which is spreading throughout the Cascades. So that's the individual and neighborhood portion of it. From the town's perspective, we need to do a better job of putting together a comprehensive emergency guide, so residents have one place they can look to for all the information they need, like information on the Alert Marin notifications they can get, what the siren does that we hear every Friday. So it's, again, it's a two-pronged effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Debra Benson, and the question is, "Rising property values and rents are displacing longtime community members. What are your ideas about keeping our community whole?"
I think one issue that we're facing right now, and that is leading to a decrease in our affordable housing and our long-term residents, is short-term rentals, Airbnb. I think that we need to, I would not allow Airbnbs in the town, frankly. There are a lot of Marin towns that don't. It's been a long time since I had the list, but I think at least four Marin towns do not allow Airbnbs to operate in their town. It's always, it's always more lucrative for the property owner to rent out for a weekend to tourists, but it disrupts the neighborhoods, and it's displacing our long-term tenants and taking away our affordable housing. So that's one thing that I see. I'm not really, I'm not really sure, I'm not in favor of rent control, because I think there are people who are really fair landlords, who keep prices low, and if we place rent control, they'll have no recourse but to raise the rents to market values. So I'd say Airbnb is a good first step, eliminating those from our neighborhoods.
So I think there are ways we can ensure we have adequate and affordable housing. We can do so by trying to protect our existing cost-effective housing stock, things like, in the old days, one of our council members, who's here now, did a prohibition on condo conversions, or conversions of rentals to condos. But we can also seek opportunities to add additionally appropriately scaled units. One of the things the council will be taking up soon is adopting an ordinance to streamline junior and second units and amnesty ordinance for some of the illegal units that will get rid of fees and penalties. We also can approve lower-scale, moderately scaled housing that is done in infill. And we can also, I brought something to the council, which is a fair housing ordinance, which would specifically prohibit discrimination for Section 8 voucher holders. It gives them a level playing field. And so I think we can do all this and still retain our small-town character. When I was mayor, we adopted a junior second unit ordinance, which was the second in Marin. We also adopted emergency shelter for homeless folks. And we also adopted a Fairfaxian approach to our housing element, which is infill.
Well, I think the most important thing for Fairfax when it comes to affordable housing is that the project is in the character of the town. And so I absolutely, unequivocally am against any kind of streamlining. I think the community needs to have a full process in which they can shape the project, as we did with Victory Village. The original plan had two single-family homes behind the project, which would have been up on the hillside. Ultimately, after streamlining was abandoned, somehow, I don't know who the generous soul was, but we were able to, as a town, dedicate the back 18 acres to open space, and it made it much more of a Fairfax project, something consistent with the views that we're used to in this town, which give us the peace of mind throughout our days. Thank you.
Here we go.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very big problem, and it's very disrupting to our community to have mostly renters not being able to afford to live here anymore. And it's a multifaceted thing. I mean, to go back to the Airbnb thing, Airbnbs are illegal right now, and there's hundreds of them. So I don't think, you know, making them illegal is really a way of dealing with it. But I think to be able to legally, some people depend on that for their income, and I think that we need to shape the way that works in a way that works for Fairfax. You know, I think we need to frankly regulate that. Barbara's approach of infill, I think we're doing a lot. California law now dictates that just about every house is allowed to have a second unit, a granny unit of some sort, at this point. We also passed this junior second unit thing, which is great. It keeps houses flexible and available. We can have a small, basically, it converts an extra bedroom into a small unit with a kitchenette. And I think that's one way to make an affordable place for people to live. And, you know, that along with doing infill, allowing, you know, looking at our laws around second units and doing the amnesty, I think are multi-pronged approaches that we can do. And that's all good. Thanks.
As a planning commissioner, I'm proud to have led my fellow commissioners to disallow short-term rentals 30 days or below in a revised draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance we were working on, to keep those units for much-needed affordable housing. I support reinstating the second unit amnesty program, waiving fees, and looking anew at the building code, to see if there's anything within the building code, absent health and safety, that we can do to help those second units become legal. A lot of those are old buildings that, you know, on the first floor may not have the height requirement we need now, so I think it's worthwhile taking another look at that. I also support small infill projects, as long as they fit our character and respect our zoning laws. And we have a great age-friendly task force in town. We're an age-friendly town. That's doing a lot to help support our older residents' age in their homes, and I support that totally. Thank you.
I concur with many of the points that were made.
I concur with many of the points that were made. Not quite all, but the, so the Airbnb issue we have tackled, I do support the idea of limiting them to maybe only a part of the year and limiting short-term rentals in general. We did get an earful when we brought it up at the Planning Commission just for a conversation from people who rent out for Airbnbs. So it's amazing how there can be different sides to these stories. Junior second units are brilliant and we did pass that. I'm very much in favor of that. I'm glad we passed it. Check out Lily Pad Homes for some of the ideas behind that. It is a severe issue. Through our work, my wife's work with young families, we get a front row seat on the number of people, including our own kids, who cannot afford to live here, even though they grew up in this town. And older people who are often stuck in their houses because they can't leave. Their Prop-13 has allowed them to stay, but they're in an overhoused situation. So the junior second units help with that, but also anything else that we can do, including Victory Village, might actually allow some people to move into a place that's more fitting to their scale of what they need at that time. It is a major issue and it's a big one we need to work on.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Barbara Kohler. And the question is, "Envisioning the future of Fairfax includes upgrading Parkade and our aging downtown infrastructure. Do you have the leadership to shepherd this project to serve the broad constituents of Fairfax?"
Yes. So one of the things I've really been focusing on is our infrastructure and what can we do to improve our downtown? Minimal changes, things like, I ensured we had money, we have money in the budget this year to fix our downtown sidewalks. We can't have people tripping or not being able to walk strollers or be in a wheelchair in our downtown sidewalks. So we'll be working on that. Our Parkade, we're looking at minimal changes for accessibility, ADA accessibility, and that's something we need to do. We also need to repave it because right now, I know I've tripped on that many times. So there's a lot we can do to our downtown that are small changes that can really improve what we're doing. And I feel I have the leadership to do that. I've also focused our attention, which is close to downtown, on streets, repairing our streets. So we now have about a million dollars allocated for street improvements in our budget. And all the council agreed with that. But I think some of what we need to do is get back to basics and fix our aging infrastructure, fix our downtown so it's walkable and rideable and wheelchair accessible. Thank you.
I think that was, to put it bluntly, a flawed question. I don't think the question is, "Are you prepared to shepherd in a modern downtown?" I think the question is, "Do we want a modern downtown?" And my answer would be no. I think we have a history that's worth preserving. And especially in these troubled times with our country sort of in disarray on the federal level, our history is something to cling to. Our past is closely linked with the sixties and I think that message of peace and love gives us strength to persevere through this period. And so I would not change structurally the downtown. As far as fixing roads, that's what we should focus on. The nuts and bolts of this town should have a bigger portion of discussion, even though they're not exactly entertaining. Thanks.
I'd like to reread the question. "Envisioning the future of Fairfax includes upgrading Parkade and our aging downtown infrastructure. Do you have the leadership to shepherd this project to serve the broad constituents of Fairfax?"
Okay, thanks for that. Yeah, I think I do also. And it's touchy because everybody, you know, you want to protect your downtown. You know, I think downtown is great. It really is the heart of our community. It's also built around what used to happen before we had a zillion cars all over the place. So you know, updating the parking there, I think, is the essence of what that question was, plus you know, how do you lead the vision? And I think really, being able to calm down and listen to each other and practically put out different ideas and vet those ideas. One of the big hullabaloo's, which is, I don't know, maybe not the elephant in the room, but the GPAC did do some public workshops, which looked at various different ideas. And a bunch of those ideas were voted on by the people in those workshops. Those were reflected in the general plan. And when it came before the council to approve the general plan, we pulled that part out and said, "Well, you know, this is in process and we need to go back and work that." Various different things come up, as you know, in the council and we didn't get to that until last year. At that point, the public was like, "Well, wait, you know, you're pushing these ideas on us." These are the public's ideas and we just need to calm down and talk about different things together. Parking is important. Walking around is important. Being able to ride bikes around is important. It's our shared space downtown and we need to solve those real problems. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll agree with everyone else that yes, I have the leadership to do this. I wasn't involved in the general plan development, but as I'm walking the community, doing my precinct walking, I'm listening to the community and the community's very definitive about what they see in the downtown area. So I think part of that leadership is to follow the needs and what the community is saying. And what I hear from the community is, you know, fixing the stairs, looking at crosswalks for pedestrian safety, you know, keeping the streets open, doing the minor things in the downtown for safety purposes, and leaving it as it is that everybody loves the downtown for and supports the local businesses. Thank you.
So yes, I too have the leadership, just to complete that cycle. I'll focus on that misconception, that snafu that John pointed to, because he and I were on the General Plan Advisory Committee. When we were directed by council to vision, to do a visioning workshop, we did two sessions, all day Saturdays, in this room. And out of those came one core idea. And since then, through the process John was describing and the time that's passed, that has become kind of twisted into something else. But the vision, just to clarify, that came out of the town, not out of council, consultants, planning commission, staff, it came out of people in this room, was to create a secondary route up LC and Bank and open up, it wasn't even possible at that time because the gas station had a parking lot there, but that's now open, but to open up a secondary route to relieve congestion through town. And since then, every time we get together, including in the recent workshop that was so contentious, after the contentious part and people sat down drawing on maps again, the same ideas came up. It seems like a logical thing to pursue. So like John, I would like to see us and I believe I can lead us toward trying to settle down and look at that idea and look at creative solutions that could actually relieve congestion and open up ways through town.
I was at that workshop at this last, I was at two of these workshops actually. The town paid an East Bay planner thirty-seven thousand dollars to come up with the plan to redo downtown. So there, and the choices of approving an idea or not approving an idea were how, there was only one choice given to disapprove one idea. You could not say, "I don't like this plan at all." So a lot of people actually left that workshop. The planner came back recently with a plan to redo the Parkade, to change Broadway into one lane in each direction, to get rid of eight parking spaces, and to push through LC Bank Street to Sir Francis Drake with the idea of getting rid of the Claus Drive in Grithon Aggress, which would push traffic into the Dominga Pacheca neighborhood, into Spruce, and make it a lot harder for the thirty-five hundred people who live on this side of Broadway to get home. It would also make it more difficult for the fire trucks to go up and down. And no one who was involved in creating this plan bothered to ask the fire chief what they thought of it. It turned out, after a lot of money was spent, that it shouldn't be done.
The next question will start with Charles. And that would be, "Do you support charter schools?"
I do not support charter schools in excellent school districts. I would go to the, you know, phrase, "Don't, what is it? Don't fix it if it isn't broken." The charter school in Ross Valley School District has been incredibly disruptive. You have redundant positions, you have an empty classroom on one side and you have, you know, frankly, my son in a hallway classroom on the other side. He hasn't been able to start his jazz band class because they can't find a room for a different class so that the music room is free. There's incredible variety offered by our normal public school. I don't want to, you know, go into the definition of public school, but you're able to select an elective at White Hill of art, music, technology. And this variety is superior to the variety offered by a charter school. I think the charter school, charter schools can serve a purpose disrupting a underperforming school district. And I think that's why they were created and that's where they should be implemented. Thanks.
Yeah. This is a horrible dividing thing in our community. And I should start by saying the concept of charter schools, I think, is a wrong one. About a year and a half ago, some representatives from the MAP, then the MAP program, came to me, asking me to sign a letter of support for them. And I knew that the ILC and then MAP program had gone through a bunch of iterations at Manor School, sometimes getting along pretty well, but a lot of times having divisions and it was difficult. The teachers of that program had gotten together and said, "Well, we are willing to give up our union representation, our retirement benefits, and things like that that are very valuable to them in order to dedicate themselves to the kids." And it saddened me greatly because things had gotten to that point where these two schools could not coexist properly. I didn't envision that it would get to the point where it is now at all, but I wrote a letter in support of those teachers, you know, at that time. Whether I support charter schools, no. I think it's bad for our community. I think it does, it's a step in the, as we've seen nationally, it's a step in the privatization of our public system, which I think is really important to support. So it saddened me greatly to see our community pulled apart around this issue. And I really would hope that people would come together and agree to work things out.
Okay. The town council doesn't have jurisdiction over the schools. I don't have children in the school district. I've been following the conversation on social media. I support public education and I support our teachers in public education, in public schools, when we support them. We're supporting the students. I realize that there are private charter and public charters. I'm not sure that there's what the differences are as far as the oversight of those public charters, but from my perspective, my support would go to the public school. Thank you.
Well, I've been hearing plenty about this and learning as I walk door-to-door and talk with people. Any issue that divides the community as deeply as this is not good for the community. So while it's certainly true that the council doesn't have direct authority over most issues, certainly over how classrooms are used, we do have jurisdiction over land use issues and safety issues. But the, I think anything that the council or council members could do to try to mediate in this situation, try to bring people together and sort it out, it has been a terrible mess. My son went through the K-12 span and through ILC, which I was, we were in the first group that formed the ILC, which went on to basically become MAP and which then now has turned into this mess because of ending up outside of the classrooms. And it's a long story. But it's not a good one. In general, I feel that charter schools nationwide are not something that I would support because they're generally used as a way to break up public education. And I am a huge supporter of universal public education. So we need to sort this through. It's a unique situation here because it really didn't start out with a charter school. It really started out with a school within a school concept, which we have many of and which work very well in our community.
I think all schools should be public schools. I, in the case of, I think that charter schools are threatening our public school system. There's, in our district, there's, each child is worth eight thousand dollars a year. I think that eight thousand dollars a year is attracting people who have interests other than educating our children. My daughter was in Manor School for a year. Then she went out to the open classroom in Lagunitas, which was a choice in a public school. That system had a Montessori public school, the open classroom public school, and a more traditional program. I just went to a memorial for one of the originating teachers out there and the word that I kept hearing over and over again was "community." And what is going on now in our community is anti-community. I also heard over and over again, "It's for the kids. What can we do for the kids? How do we deal with this kid? What do we do with this kid?" And what is going on now in our community is not for the kids and it's hurting the kids. And we have to find a way to come to peace with this. So yes, I think all schools should be public schools.
So I want to reiterate that the town council does not have jurisdiction over school district matters and we do not have land use authority either. But I do want to say, I've supported public schools all my life. I don't have children, but I am a product of public schools. I also, cleaning up hazardous waste sites, one of the things I did was create the first of its kind in the nation for ensuring that public schools would be located on environmentally safe properties. There's no other program like this in the country. What I did was write the legislation, survive the legislative grillings because schools in California were putting kids, public schools, on environmentally contaminated properties without proper cleanup. So now there's a program to ensure that won't happen. But as far as the charter school, I understand it's a public charter, this one. I don't support the use of school vouchers at all, but I do support public schools. And I think it's unfortunate that California public schools are near the bottom in all of the country as far as our ratings for public schools. I think the charter school, unfortunately, there's been so much divisiveness in the community. I'm hopeful that people look at this and say I'm hopeful that people look at this and say, this is hurting our children. Kids going to either school are going to be affected by this, and it's a really difficult time for kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're almost at our halfway point, and I wanted to remind our viewers at cmcm.tv/fairfax that there's still time to come down and to bring your questions. So at this time, I'll ask our question gatherer to bring them up front. Okay? Our next question will begin with John. Thank you. Over the past few years, a number of civic issues have divided the community. What are your ideas to bring the community together?
Well, this is a really good one, and it's a difficult thing, and I think really what we need to do is to slow down and listen to each other and not become as polarized as we have been. We need to have a forum that allows us to listen to each other. Nextdoor seems like it would be good for democracy, but in a way, it, you know, it becomes an echo chamber, and people go back and forth. Sometimes there's misinformation on it, sometimes there isn't. I think a moderated situation like that could be useful, but to have an anarchic situation is not useful. It's a bunch of people yelling in a bunch of separate rooms, and you can listen in to some of those rooms, and, yeah, I don't think that's, frankly, I think what's good for democracy is to be able to work out our problems in a non-polarizing way. And my ideas on how to do that is, I mean, I try to get people in the same room together and give each person a chance to think and to talk and be listened to and heard by other people, and try to speak to those things that those people really care about. Because I think, bottom line, we care about very similar things and have different approaches to it, and we just have to learn to accept that we're all a little different, and that's okay. But we need to work together as a community to come together around these issues. I mean, it's important. Thanks.
So I think the town's vision statement says, "We value civic engagement by all of our residents," and encourages its citizens to be actively engaged in all facets of community life. I think part of our issue is we don't do enough communicating with the community and providing information. We have several boards and commissions in town that no one knows what is happening on those boards and commissions. They go as far as publicizing agendas. It's the old-fashioned way of putting up a notice in three public places in town 72 hours before the meeting. We should be putting agendas for all of our meetings on Nextdoor as a calendar item so that the community knows what is happening in all of those boards and commissions and can come down and be involved in those meetings from the beginning so things don't bubble up to the council level. And there's more information at a lower level and more community input. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent question that you've asked there. We need to have more conversations in town that are designed for creativity, referring back to the excellent two workshops that I spoke of earlier that we had in this room, where we had tables set up and people had maps to color on. They worked in groups, and they came together, and then they worked in groups some more. There was all sorts of information in the room, and it was not run to create or to vet a particular idea, and it certainly didn't limit people to three minutes of speaking. It was really designed to bring out creativity. So generally, when you're designing something, you first want to gather the facts, then you want to really open your mind to creative solutions, and then you come down to what might actually work. And town council meetings and all of the Brown Act meetings that we follow do not do a good job of those things, and they are understandably quite frustrating. I think we should have FAQs, frequently asked questions. The town did an excellent one on Victory Village toward the end. It was very well done. Things like that should be done much more often to just make sure that people understand, have some clear and reliable source of facts. There's work being done on that sort of thing, and also on the possibility of having either a volunteer or a slightly paid coordinator for outreach in the town to be able to coordinate that process. My time is up, but many more ideas. Thank you.
I think that we need to make people more aware of what the town is planning before the deed is done. So I see plans being advanced, money being spent, and something coming into fruition and then presented to the people, and that tends to, that tends to set people aback. I think we need, I think one thing that would be really good to do would be to plan the agenda for town council meetings so that we didn't have so many important issues so that the meetings last until midnight, because a lot of people either come and then leave before the issue comes up, or they don't come at all because we are famous for having those meetings that last until midnight. I think we need a community outreach program. I think that it would be nice to have an informal town hall meeting with the council members, public meeting, that isn't the one that's deciding the issues. And I would be willing, as a council member, to spend the time to do that. I think our website needs work to be easier to navigate. That's, those are the ideas. It's an important issue. Thank you.
So I think first, there are a number of things that have caused a lot of divisiveness in this town and anger, and I think one of the things we've done is step back from a lot of those plans, and I'm disappointed to hear that people viewed a lot of those plans as a fait accompli. But that shows that we aren't communicating effectively. One of the things we've done is take some of those holistic plans off the table, some things I was never supportive of, closing Bolinas Road. I was never supportive of that, and that came off the table right away. So we're now looking at things in more bite-sized chunks. I think there has been a perception that people in this town have the time to follow things from start to finish, and I know I didn't follow the general plan from start to finish. I was off working somewhere. But I think we have to realize that people have limited time. How can we work with them on smaller projects versus these large projects? I also think the workshops that were held had good intentions, but I don't think they were effective at all. I think we need to do smaller projects, have smaller opportunities for people to be involved, and really do not get the impression, because we've done something for 10 years, that somehow everybody knows what's in that. So I've been advocating stepping back and doing things on a smaller basis and having the public at the table.
I agree with Barbara about smaller projects, but where I see most of the divisiveness coming from is that a lot of projects are initiated by staff and not by residents, and when residents see the projects, they go, where did this come from? What is, how, it's just out of the blue. And for instance, I was, I'm on the Open Space Committee. Two days ago, the wall property developer was there. His project is basically 10 or so McMansions up the side of the hill, a gated community. And then Ben Burdo, the planning director, came up and said, "In all likelihood, this is going to be approved." I don't know where he got that from. And also, he said, "I'm considering letting the developer choose his own visual impact consultant," which sounds crazy to me. I mean, the town needs, the town council should not let the staff have control of stuff like this, of choosing these consultants. They need to call these things up and take control. Frankly, we need to go back to a town administrator form of government. The town manager form is not working.
We've got a lot of great questions, and it's hard to decide, to decide what to go to next. So we'll just start here. What is your view on Victory Village, and are there other opportunity sites in Fairfax? And we'll start with Cindy.
So I was on the Planning Commission and voted for Victory Village. It's 53 units of low, very low senior income for senior residents. I think part of the issues that we had with Victory Village is the process it took to come to fruition, and then also, I think, the frustration that I heard from residents who were frustrated because we're losing local control over our own projects. Some of that with Victory Village was neighbors that were concerned about parking, which was a local control issue. But ultimately, it was approved. Hopefully, it will help some of our local residents stay in the community. As far as other projects for housing in the community, again, I go back to small infill projects that respect our zoning regulations and fit into the character of the town. I can't see anything the size of Victory Village coming before us again. Thank you.
So I also voted for Victory Village and worked for it for quite a while. I've worked with five planning directors, so it's been a long path. I do support it, and I'm excited that we have, I believe, in Fairfax changed the conversation in the county by offering an example of something that is going to be a really good thing for the community and changed many, many lives for the better. I think it's in a great location because it's already developed, and the church was who actually initiated it. It is 100% affordable for low and very low income, as Cindy said. That was a demand of the community. We actually, it's guaranteed for 55 years, and then after that, the community, the town has first option, if that were to ever change, which is not likely, to continue that in perpetuity. So we've done the best we possibly can. We also actually changed the zoning and created a new zone, residential senior zone, in order to address the legitimate concern in the community that it not create a precedent for anything in any other zones. So I think we've done that very carefully. It took a long time to do and was not an easy process, took a lot of patience, and I hope that the Victory Village people can get their funding now that they've suffered through that long process because that was tough on them.
In regarding Victory Village, I would have supported Victory Village wholly had it been like Bennett House, which does, has no restrictions against giving preference to Fairfax seniors. Victory Village is funded in part by federal money, so they are going to be electing their tenants from a bank of people on waiting lists from across the country. They work in a point system. Fairfax residents have very little chance of residing in Victory Village. They qualify as tax-exempt because the developer owns 0.1% of the property. The rest of the property is invested by billion-dollar hedge fund people, and they will earn 10% investment on their interest on their investment. The units will actually rent at market rate rents. The tenants will be given affordable 30% of their income rents, but the project has been given project-based Section 8 vouchers. So they will be, the developers will be collecting market rate rents, which I believe will drive Fairfax rents up because we're going to be looking at Marin County base for market rate.
So I fully support Victory Village. Unfortunately, I was recused from all deliberations in voting because I lived right next to it and would have a financial impact on my property. However, I do sit on the county community development block grant. That's the federal HUD money, and federal rules are different, so I insured and worked hard to retain monies for that project. I will say there's a little bit of misinformation up here. The Victory Village project, which I've been involved with for years through CDBG, will be for very low income and low income. It also is, all units will be eligible for Section 8 housing. That doesn't mean that all people will be Section 8, so they will not necessarily be market rate. In fact, the rents will be quite low. I will also say that Bennett House, the rules changed over the years, and that is eligible for beyond Fairfax residents. We also know that based on housing work in the county and throughout the state, that typically, there will be Marin residents primarily. People are not going to be moving from the East Bay or from Tennessee to move to Fairfax. But I do want to say, I'm really proud of Victory Village. When I worked with folks at the county, they encouraged them to work with the Marin Community Foundation, and that's why, when the night it was approved by the city, RCD, the nonprofit housing developer, was able to announce that they will be able to dedicate 18 acres of open space to the town.
First, I'd like to say, after much divisiveness and debate, maybe not divisiveness, but after a long-drawn-out process, I personally am totally at peace with the project. I'm happy with the way it turned out. However, what needs to be looked into was initially, when the process started, the public was given a 160-page document, which was, you know, very difficult to deal with. And after much examination, we residents found that two other properties were being streamlined along with Victory Village. And that's unacceptable, to have that hidden in that size of a document. That is not transparent. Even if you release it, you know, on the website, whatever, that's a data dump. That's too much to handle. It's unacceptable to expect the public to search through that size of a document and then, in the end, discover, you know, these things which are piggybacked onto a project, you know, that aren't in the title, that have no relation with the project, and we need to correct that with staff to not have that type of document come out again. Thanks.
Well, of course, I also voted in favor of Victory Village, and I, you know, there was a lot of different moving parts in that behind the scenes. And I would like to point out that the laws have changed significantly since Bennett House was built. I mean, and now Victory Village has this, and a lot of the things that Charles was just referring to are California law. The law is a constantly changing thing, and we have to pay attention to the law. I mean, that's how it works. I mean, we live in a law-based society, and the rules around zoning, I mean, there was, California law had outlined this process, which Charles just referred to, which basically would streamline a whole bunch of things and remove input from the people of Fairfax on future projects. And this zoning change that Bruce referred to was something that I worked very hard behind the scenes to push forward, and basically, we based it on case law, which preserved Fairfax's zoning control and input process for future projects. And by zoning this specifically as a senior housing project, it allowed that project to go forward without being challenged in court, which would have blown it up, basically, and killed it. and killed it. So, I think we got a very good project that will help Fairfax. You know, we have to deal with in the confines of the law. So, thank you. My time's up.
Thank you. We'll start again with Bruce on the left side. What is your position on monitoring noise? What would you do to address noise pollution in Fairfax, such as leaf blowers, helicopters, amplified music?
Noise is a complicated thing to measure. Yeah, it is. Leaf blowers, I certainly would love to see us not have gasoline-powered leaf blowers entirely. I know that the gardening companies need to use leaf blowers that'll last longer than the electric ones, but that would be a good thing. We have more of an issue with noise, really with more of a contentious issue with noise, I think, in the town around music. And we have dealt with that pretty successfully. Council has done most of the work, I must say. Over on, at the park, where the weddings were held, that are held, that has been dealt with pretty successfully by, in large part, technically changing the way the sound system works. There's still a pretty significant issue with parries and the neighbors along Dominga are still quite upset by it. What we're dealing with there is, to a large extent, just not doing the things that we get promises it'll be done. Keep working on that. That's the outside music in parries. I understand that's an issue, but I understand that also, of course, the town has traditionally been a music town and so we have to sort this through as neighbors.
I would prefer those to leaf blowers. I have someone come a couple of times a year and help me clean up my yard and when they use a leaf blower, it blows the leaves all up on the side of the house and into the bushes. But I know that they need these tools to make their living, so I wouldn't oppose them. We have hours of, we have an ordinance that allows machinery and tools to be operated only in certain times of the day. Regarding the music issues, the Deer Park issue was mollified with the help of John Reed, I believe, by using technology, changing equipment. The parries issue has been addressed by coming to a kind of a consensus. The business agreed to do some things like sound level checks, keeping doors closed, and have not broken the noise ordinance. So, I think we're doing pretty well by working together.
So, noise is a real issue in town, particularly because we have a really lively downtown. We have live music every night of the week and I know for people that live downtown, that can be particularly disturbing. What we've done is taken things, and leaf blowers, since I've been on the council, I think we took them up once. I think the issue is more the music coming downtown. Also, at the farmer's market, we've heard some complaints. I think the way to deal with it is probably not the most satisfactory for the people complaining, but it's a case-by-case basis. We worked on Deer Park Villa, the neighbors were here, I don't know how many times, for over a year. And really, even though John did a great job of working with them to mitigate that noise, so that was a case-by-case and I'm still advocating that type of approach, really is because Deer Park no longer really holds events. What happened downtown with some of our music venues is we've done a case-by-case assessment and made some concessions, which don't always work. We've also had complaints over at Good Earth with trucks. And so, we've worked that out on a case-by-case basis. I can't say that everybody's happy. Definitely, they're not. But I think we need to look at these on a case-by-case basis and work out solutions that way.
Well, I would say, I personally became aware of this issue when the police arrived at my house, when my son was playing his euphonium, which is a small tuba, Sunday morning at about nine o'clock or something like that. And I inquired about all the times and wrote them down and, you know, I now am more sensitive to other people's schedules. And I do think this issue centers mostly around downtown and I think most of all, we have to respect residents that wake up early in the morning or residents that, you know, have different schedules. And I think, I don't know exactly the details of the live music, but I tend to want to favor residents over the establishments and let the establishments change a bit, change their showtimes and allow everyone a good night of sleep. Thank you.
Yeah, I think actually, noise is an issue all through town. One of the things that really gets people's goat, and mine included, is the leaf blowers. They're obnoxious and sure, it's supposed to be 15 minutes on one property, but then when that same worker moves to the one next door and the one next door to that and the one next door to that, it goes on for hours. And I think that there are technological fixes for that in that we have quieter electric leaf blowers. I think that something has to get around the recharging issue, you know. I mean, they all have vehicles. Swap the battery out for something that's charging it off the vehicle. You know, basically, there are technological fixes for a lot. There's been a couple of references to my work with Deer Park Villa and I consider that very successful. There's not enough time to go into that here, but it's, the whole story's on my website. So, you know, parries is another case like that and we are in the process of working that out. It went through the Planning Commission. There's not a satisfactory conclusion and I think that technological fixes, I mean, it's loud in there. There's no question about that. I mean, we have, you know, Fairfax culturally is a place with a lot of live music and a lot of people really enjoy that about Fairfax. It is part of the culture here. And, you know, it's hard to have live music without, you know, music is noise in some people's eyes. And there's a way to mitigate it technologically. And parries has a lot of live surfaces and I think that's where we need to look at the technological fix.
So, I want to have a vote here for leaf blowers. They're necessary. We talked earlier about disaster preparation and fire risk. I was up on my roof a couple of days ago, blowing with my leaf blower the redwood leaves that were on top of my roof. So, tools like that are necessary in the community as long as you use them within the noise ordinance. As someone said, most of the issues, I think, are downtown with the clubs. As long as, with parries, there's been a lot of work with the town council as far as crafting agreements and as long as they adhere to those, that's the important thing. The other thing that I hear from people that live in the downtown areas, the amount of noise from other events that we have, be it the farmer's market or other events. And something like the farmer's market is something that I would look at to see what music is played there, if there can be some changes there where there isn't loud music but still has some entertainment within that market. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Most residents that live here in Fairfax enjoy the small-town character. How can we preserve that small-town character? And you will be first.
I would like to, I would like to bring back the design review board to our town. We got rid of that some years ago because it slows down development process. But I think slowing things down is a good idea. I think part of keeping our small-town character is being very careful about rezoning, how we rezone. One side of town is zoned highway commercial and there is movement towards changing that zoning to central commercial. Highway commercial allows only grandfathered residents. If a developer wanted to come in and build a residential project, they would have to get a use permit. They would have to go through process. So, I think that's an important thing to keep as a protective measure. I think we should write into our plan, especially with the movement coming down from the state, some architectural guidelines so that we can protect what we have. And that's about it, I guess. Must be time to stop.
So, I think to a certain extent, we're there. We have our small-town character. We're defined by our open space and ridge lines. We have a lot of great places to walk. We have a walkable city. I don't think there's a lot of need to change to some of these urban planning ideas. We still do have a design review board. It's, Planning Commission does that as a separate task. So, we're still very much with our eye on the ball of making sure that our houses stay small. I recently participated in something where they said houses shouldn't be any bigger than 3,500 square feet. Well, our rules on the books are pretty much 2,500 square feet or less. So, we've always had smaller houses here and we've always tried to advocate for things that fit within the beauty of Fairfax. I think the other things we do by our Fairfax Festival, our town picnic, are all things that we do to kind of celebrate our small-town character. The Art Walk the other night, I have new neighbors that just moved in from American Canyon and they have said, "This is the best place we've ever been. We love everything about it." They're embracing every opportunity. So, I think we're there and I think we just need to work hard to stay within those ethics.
When I initially wrote my candidate statement, I was in a very passionate mood and I wrote something like, "Small-town character is the most overused phrase in Fairfax politics." The question is, what does it mean to me? And my answer was, "Don't build three- and four-story, don't buildings on top of our, I mean, don't like add stories to our downtown commercial zone. Preserve our history." And when I got into the details of learning about the zoning proposals, one was changing highway commercial to commercial central. I learned that that would prohibit lumberyards, car repair shops, and some other sort of nitty-gritty types of businesses that we need to live. I believe we shouldn't outsource those types of businesses to San or Fell. If we use these types of products, we should have them in our town. That is, that's true sustainability. Well, I am a bicycle commuter, but I do accept some of the realities of life and I like to see them around me. I don't believe in outsourcing. Thank you.
If you want, I have a timer up here, too. You good? All right. Terrific.
If they make a noise again.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, everybody loves the small-town character of Fairfax and, you know, the downtown is part of what contributes to that and the way it feels, the way everything's been built around what people can walk between. And it's a human-scale thing. I love it as much as everybody else and evidently, people from American Canyon who, you know, basically every, you know, my dad from Vermont comes and says, "Oh, this is great. This is just like Vermont," you know. If we had seven-month winters, we probably wouldn't have the, you know, the rising rent problems that we have here. But, yeah, I mean, the small-town character also builds out of, I mean, the feeling of Fairfax also builds out of the terrific community that we've got here. I mean, people really care about it and they really care about contributing in a good, positive way to the community. Some people like to dig in their heels and protect it no matter what, but really, I think protecting it is acting proactively to see how we can get together, build our community, and work together in a positive way so that, you know, we can all get along and it can have our loving, I mean, Fairfax is a lovely place and nobody's going to argue with that. I'd like to address the design review versus planning commission thing. We have to pay attention to the law, unfortunately. And if those two things were combined at the planning commission level, because to go back and forth between two different committees was taking enough time so that, under California law, any project that was going back and forth and it took too long, got automatically approved. Okay? So, there you go. I mean, you got to combine those two and efficiently work through the process so that, you know, those, all the questions being talked about are dealt with right there in one combined committee. I should also mention that the lumberyard is not in highway commercial zone, okay? So, that's kind of a red herring.
So, we've already talked about keeping the downtown looking as it does now. We had that discussion. I'm for keeping it as it is now. The other thing is that we have, as Charles mentioned, a great small business community of local businesses that support local residents, so residents don't have to drive outside of the town to get the service that they need. And I think that's very important. The possibilities that came along with changing highway commercial to central commercial would have impacted some of those businesses and I'm not for that. We want to keep our business community here. You look at other places like our neighboring town of San and Selmo that has issues with businesses in their downtown area. They're struggling and always have been. Another thing is looking at historical preservation of our downtown buildings. That's something that's on the list for the Planning Commission to do. And then the last thing is just all of our wonderful events like the Art Walk that keeps our community together. My husband was driving through the town that night, coming home, and he commented to me later that evening that all he saw were smiling faces as he drove through the downtown. And that's what Fairfax is all about. Thank you.
Fairfax is an incredibly sweet place, as long as you avoid next door. Yeah, there were a number of points made. I will comment also on the design review board. It was not eliminated. It was combined with the Planning Commission for reasons that John outlined. Basically, there's a lot of interaction between design review and the conditions that the Planning Commission puts on things as we approve. And that back and forth is a lot simpler to do or a lot, it's actually a lot more possible to do if the two were combined. And that's why that was done. It was not eliminated. Another thing that was not done is for anybody ever, at any point, who values their life in this town, to ever consider adding stories downtown. That was never considered, never has been considered. I don't believe it ever will be considered. Not a consideration. The Fairfax hardware is not in any way in any danger. So, I just wanted to address those because it's really, we need to have our facts straight when we're talking about things. The town is very walkable at this point and we're doing what we can to improve it. I think that's a good thing because that helps to, we need auto traffic to go through and we, as I said, I would like to see us look at a way to improve auto circulation. and we, as I said, I would like to see us look at a way to improve auto circulation. That would also improve walking circulation because we wouldn't have the autos right where everybody hangs out downtown. The Art Walk, the festival are -- that's it?
I'm excited to say that this year we had a website that you could, or an email address that you could write to, send your questions in. And I'd like to ask one question from the email. Global warming with sea level rise is an issue facing San Onselmo and neighboring cities. How should Fairfax prepare for that eventuality? And we'll start with Barbara.
So I think we need to do a few things. I need, we need to take active steps to prevent more greenhouse gas emissions. We need to monitor, and we also need to adapt. So some of what we can do for taking proactive steps, and we're already doing, is the town adopted a climate action plan, and I had the pleasure of serving on the Climate Action Committee for the first three years. One of the things we've been doing is kind of ticking off some of those things in our plan. So as mayor, one of the things I did was secure a grant to allow people to opt up to deep green energy through MCE, 100% renewable energy. For one year, you get $5 a month off on your bill, which is the difference between light green and deep green. Other things led efforts to change our flush rate on toilets for water conservation, which wasn't very popular with some. But we need to be as conservative as possible. We have a plan in place to change our LED lights to all, I mean, our streetlights to all LED. What are the other things we're doing? We need to really work towards flood control. Some things are off the table now, but we can do things like clean out our creeks, look to opportunities to add some floodplains in small areas. What can we do? Even things that happen in San Onselmo can help us. The Sunnyside Detention Basin will help control some of our water. Thank you.
I have to say that I very much agree with a lot of the statements Barbara made, that individuals need to be incentivized. The way a vine grows on a fence, the individual buds of the vine do their best to find sunlight, and the whole organism is optimized by the individual parts trying to optimize themselves. And I personally think we need to incentivize solar panels, electric cars. We can do with minimal disruption, minimal architectural and historical disruption to the parkade. We can add more electric car charging stations, and we can offset that electric usage with solar panels on our public buildings. I've seen some on some buildings which look very old, and I know personally, I just installed, well, actually just reinstalled solar panels on our condo in Canyon Village. And I know personally that the technology keeps improving. Solar panels are like computer processors, and they keep improving. They keep getting more and more efficient, and we're reaching a tipping point where they're going to play a major role in our society.
Good. Okay. Yeah, I might mention that this question was about sea level rise, and I wonder if it's the, what is it, the climate condition formerly known as global warming? I mean, isn't that the edict from the Trump administration, anyway? I just had to throw a little humor in there, but it's very real. I mean, I think we, as a community, are grasping that and moving towards it. I mean, I've had solar panels on my house now for 11 years, and they're not the modern ones, but they still work pretty well. And I think dealing with the aspects of climate change is part of what the reality is right now for everybody on Earth. And, you know, dealing with the different nature of the storms. I mean, our stream almost flooded four times last winter. It changed, you know, I live on the creek, and I watched it almost crest over the banks. Sea level rise is one aspect of that. You know, flooding in our creeks is another aspect of that. The fact, you know, greenhouse gases are changing. We need to think about our actions and adapt, and there's, you know, change our actions. I mean, the biggest contributor to greenhouse gases is our transportation system. And, you know, personally, I got the grants to put every one of those charging stations in Fairfax. So, you know, last time I was mayor. So we all do our part along the way, and that's what we've got to do.
So sea level rise, one aspect of the climate change we're all facing. That climate change affects things like fires that we, you know, again, go back to that disaster preparedness piece of that. It also affects our flooding. One of the things I've been doing is going to the Flood Control Zone Nine meetings where they are looking at modeling of the Ross Valley watershed area and using Corps of Engineers software to help them model what impacts are from different projects they do within the Ross Valley area. So, you know, I would work to help mitigate those 10- to 25-year flooding events and work with the rest of the community in the Ross Valley to do that.
Do we have any other questions that we'd like to bring forward?
Great question. Thank you for raising this. This is so close to my heart. This is really at the core of everything I do at this point, as much as I can. We have to deal with what's going on on our planet. What I do individually, what our family does, our house has actually had tours through it for the energy work that we've done. We have solar. We actually are efficient enough in our house that we have pretty much a zero electric bill with a modest solar array, even though we have electric cars and an electric bike. I've done research and development in solar back in the 80s, and my first solar system in my house was in time for my daughter to be born in 1982. We have, we've got the streetlights happening in Fairfax, which Cassidy DeBaker and I worked on quite a bit through the Climate Action Plan at the Climate Action Committee, which, again, I chair, and worked on the Climate Action Plan, which I think is pretty innovative. I've worked quite a bit with the Environmental Forum and Organize the Energy Days and with Marine Clean Energy. I think that within Fairfax, we need to combine looking at resilience, which is to fire, flood, and disruption of service, the kind of things that we're going to be looking at more and more often, with continuing to really press on reducing our emissions. And a lot of that is, as John says, reducing our dependence on the automobile. Thank you.
I was involved in the building industry in Santa Fe, New Mexico, in the 1970s, where the solar industry pretty much started, the innovations pretty much started. And beyond electricity, we were focusing on heating, passive solar, orientation of buildings, gray water systems. I think that we could insist in our building codes or in our town that people take these things into consideration. I think we should, we should all have gray water systems. I think any new construction should have permeable asphalt to help control flooding. And I think that the entire flood control system in the Ross Valley needs to be a whole. It needs to be looked at as a whole instead of pieces with a flood detention basin here and a wetland there. I think we need to protect our existing wetlands. And every time I see that, I think I'm taking a test. It's okay. We need to protect our existing wetlands. And the Army Corps of Engineers' Ross Channel is a major fault of this whole system because it is, the walls are 11 inches higher than the banks of the stream, so the water can't
This is the question that's close to my heart. I used to live here in Fairfax, but I couldn't find parking, so I had to move to Novato. What can be done to address the lack of adequate parking in downtown Fairfax and surrounding
Oh, oh, boy. That's a tough question. I'm sort of speechless approaching this question. I would start off by saying this question sort of relates to our issue of bicycle tourism on the weekends, when we have people coming from the city, coming from other places to enjoy West Marin, to ride over the hill to Woodacre. That increases pressure on our downtown. On the other hand, if we didn't have that bicycle tourism, I don't know if a San Francisco nonprofit would have stepped up and helped purchase, well, recently, the IJ helped fund the purchase of the golf course out in San Geronimo. So there's a balance there. I think the best thing we can do for residents is to work on our sidewalks and make sure we have, we all have access to be able to go to downtown on foot and enjoy the place. We can walk down there ourselves if our infrastructure is taken care of.
Okay. Great. Well, there's a finite amount of space downtown that is used up. But we look around, you know, we see how we can juggle the parking places that are there around a little bit, and maybe we can pick up one or two, but that really doesn't solve the problem. Basically, we dedicate a lot of the space in our downtown to parking cars already. At a recent council meeting, somebody came in and said, "Well, there's an empty lot that's for sale right now. Let's buy it and make it a parking lot." You know, if you build it, they'll come. You know, if we did that, it would be pretty expensive, and it would fill up with cars, the same as the rest of downtown. Part of it, you know, as Charles just referred to, you know, there's a lot of recreational cycles that come in. People come here to hike and stuff, too. You know, they drive here and park. And I think that if we approached our downtown to say, "Okay, you can only park two hours at a time," or whatever it is, you know, in a managed situation, it's going to drive all that parking into our neighborhoods, too. So, you know, it's a difficult one, you know, aside from planning more. I think that a lot of the stuff around parking and cars and transportation, believe it or not, we're on the cusp of a lot of technological change. Whether that's going to solve the parking problem, I doubt it. But, you know, these cars, that transportation as a service is going to help serving a lot more people, too. So I wish there was a magic bullet.
That's a tough one. Fairfax is blessed to be a destination town in some ways. I mean, the things that make this a great place for us to live here, the surrounding open space, the downtown restaurants and clubs, the events we have are also kind of our downfall in that we are a destination community, and it brings people in. I think in our general plan, we had a no-net-loss policy for parking spaces. We've lost some over the last 10, 15 years. We haven't abided by that. I think we can, as someone mentioned, look in the downtown area, and we've got areas that the curbs are painted red, that may not have been painted red initially for safety purposes. We can look there and see if we could gain some more space out of that. But beyond that, I think we have to look at a little bit more comprehensive plan so we can help the neighborhoods that live down there that take the brunt of a lot of our destination town that we like.
Well, I agree with everyone. That is a tough question in the present time. I also agree, as John mentioned, that there are some things on the longer-term future that could really help us. Transportation as a service is a general concept around what used to be called ride-sharing or carpooling, but it gets much more interesting as time goes on. So we may have some solutions in the medium-term future. I think we will, actually, and I think this is kind of the peak era of parking. But unfortunately, yes, it is a peak era of parking. The bicyclists are particularly difficult because they stay for so long. They come and they park their SUV, and then they're out for the entire day. That's difficult. We have talked at times about a neighborhood parking permit program. There was a consideration of doing a pilot over in the Inyo area, and I think that's worth pursuing because the complaints we're hearing from those neighbors were pretty severe, of people literally spending the night in their cars even. That was from the bicyclists and also from the bars. So, well, you know, this is stories we heard. It kind of shocked me. Yeah, so looking at solutions like that, I do certainly see that it's a problem right now. We need to try to get parking out of the center of town, and we do have more parking over on the Fairfax Market that we're not fully utilizing.
I think we have to save the parking we have. It's a closed system. We really don't have, in the streets, a way to create more parking. Perhaps we could lease space from St. Rita's or from Fairfax Market and direct bicyclists there. I believe there's going to be a little pub-type business opening up in the back of the bicycle store. So that alone could attract bicyclists to park there so that when they get back, they have their beer and their hot dog or whatever they're going to have. We might have to charge in order to pay for the lease payments. One idea I have, and I know it's not popular, is to license bicycles and use some of that licensing money to pay for what we need to create to house them, basically. If they are only into our parking spaces downtown, they might be attracted to a lot where they can park all day.
So I think it's pretty doubtful that we'll have more parking. My position has been, and I've thought for, let's not lose what we have. There have been proposals that have talked about bowl outs or things. I'm not supportive of those because I think we already have a walkable town, and I don't think we can afford to lose the parking we do have. I think there will always be cars. They may be electric, but we have limited space. So what can we do? I think in the future, we'll look at some managed parking throughout the town, if I'm on the council or not, maybe as resident. But I think we can look at things like, and this is completely unpopular, is something like in our lots, potentially having parking meters. And if that was to be proposed, I would propose parking meters that if you put in a quarter, you get 25 cents. But I think our concern is, we don't want to push people into the neighborhoods. So there is no easy answers to this. Can we look at opening up some red spaces, potentially? But we put some red spaces in across from the coffee roastery because people were parking there for much longer than what they were allowed, and they were causing traffic issues. So we'll do what we can, but I don't think there's any easy answers to this. More carpooling, more walking to town. I do that often, or riding my bike.
Such great questions. I've got three more great questions, but we could stay another half hour. So in respect of your time, we'll have that last question as the last. And before we start our one-minute closing statement, I'd like to let you know that the last date registered to vote is -- the last date to register to vote is October the 23rd. And if you've moved in the last year, you'll need to reregister to vote. And we're reregistering our guests in the back. I also wanted to let you know that you could check your voting status if you go to Marinvotes.org and look for an icon that, that says VIP. It's red, white and blue. You can't miss it. Click on that and you can check your voter's status. It also gives you information on how many elections you voted on, so you can really check your status. The last date to request a vote by mail ballot is November the 1st. And here in California, we have same-day voter registration. So you can register to vote at the Elections Department at the Civic Center, Suite 121, 29 days before the election, and vote there at the Civic Center. So on Election Day, you can deliver your vote by mail ballot to the county elections office or at any polling place. And we'd like to let you know that in California, now you can mail your vote by mail ballot on Election Day and it will still be counted as long as it's received within three days after the election. So now we'll go ahead with our one-minute closing statements and begin with Cindy Swift to my right, left.
My 37 years of service in the community, both my current and past service, including the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions I've worked on, and my career as an IT program and project manager, have given me the experience and skills to work collaboratively, manage budgets and be successful in community and stakeholder engagement. I have a broad base of support, as evidenced by my endorsements ranging from community leaders Larry Braggman, Pete Arigoni, Barbara Kohler, Wendy Baker, Frank Egger, Mimi Newton, Pam Miggs and our county CERT coordinator, to many community members for whom I'm the first candidate some of them have ever endorsed for council. And I'm really proud of that piece of it, that I'm bringing in people and, and getting engaged in the council race. I will be a responsible and responsive council member and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thanks.
Well, thank you to the...
We are? Okay. I was ready to be less. Got it. Okay. Well, I also respectfully ask for a vote. I mean, I, I think really what I have to offer Fairfax is my ability to really embrace where different people are coming from. This is a multifaceted community. Everybody really cares about this community. They have different ways of going about coming together. And really, it's important to respect each other and listen to each other and that's something that I do. I respect everybody. I listen to everybody. I try to figure out where people are really coming from and try to craft a solution which really works for our town. I mean, this is, this is really where community is important. It's where it comes together and, you know, we all care lots about Fairfax. And let's embrace Fairfax and each other, really move forward and I can help you do that. So that's what I'd like to do for you. Please vote for me. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to clarify one thing I said earlier, and that is that San Francisco nonprofit is purchasing the golf course in Sandronimo to turn it to open space. And how lucky are we to have, have things like that happen nearby us without even our impetus? And that shows what a special place this is. And in my closing statement, I just want to say how grateful I am to be a part of the election process. I've never met so many people in my life and stepped out of my comfort zone. And win or lose, I will personally, I pledge to publicize the next filing period for 2019 as much as I possibly can to ensure that there's at least six candidates in 2019. And I, I don't think the filing period was adequately publicized and ultimately I ran just to like be a choice and I'm really glad that, that I did. Thank you.
I'm deeply committed to public service, which is demonstrated by my years of work with state and regional government and my years of volunteering for our town on the council and through my prior service on both the Open Space Committee and the Planning Commission. I'm devoted to Fairfax and I believe I've demonstrated that I have extraordinary skills, experience and background to continue to serve our community as a council member. While I've accomplished quite a bit during my tenure on the council, I'd like to continue to serve the people of Fairfax. There is much more to do. My experience, good judgment and progressive approach will be needed over the coming years. I love Fairfax and plan on ending my days here. I sincerely appreciate your listening tonight and the forum and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you. My website is www.barbarakohler.org.
In my business, I serve. I have about 20 people that I serve and each one of them has their own idiosyncrasy. I act as a counselor sometimes. I act as a comforter, a promoter. I believe that I would be successful in dealing with a lot of different kinds of people from different walks of life. I am going to go into my endorsements. I have the endorsement of the Sierra Club because of my slow growth and strong environmental positions and of longtime Fairfax residents like former council supervisor Pete Arigoni and his wife Pat, former county, town council member Niccolo Calderaro and former mayor Frank Egger. They've endorsed me because they know I'll do a good job on the council. I'll give Fairfax residents back their voice. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you all for coming here. Thank you for the League for doing this. Indeed, this is the way that we can make major decisions and by listening, by having a forum that's, that allows ideas to emerge without being, allows them to be emerged and to emerge and be explored. So I've appreciated this conversation that we've had, although I guess it was a kind of a structured conversation, but it was a different kind and it worked very well. Our family is embedded here in this town. We love this area and we plan to stay. There's no question about it. This election is really important and that's why I'm running. As, as Fairfax builds our, our reliance, our, our own resilience and asserts leadership in these challenging times politically and environmentally that we're facing and economically, we have big challenges and I want to see us work together and I believe I can help us do that. Thank you. I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I'm so pleased the League of Women Voters chose to have an open candidate forum here in Fairfax. There have been over 75 people walking in and out this evening. So it's exciting to see the community engage such as you are in Fairfax. I'd like to thank our volunteers, Liesel Ingrid and Joan Brown, our timekeeper. Thank you, Marcia, for coming today. And I wanted to let you know, there's one last question that I've got to throw out there. Someone is asking, "What's burning now in Fairfax?" There's smoke outside. So as you mingle and mix this evening, please help put away the chairs. That'd be terrific. I'm Vida Flores from the League of Women Voters.